I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for September 3, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
Before we go move on to proclamations, we just want to let all the Zoom participants know that our video is not working. We are having technical difficulties, so there will not be video, but there will be audio for the entire meeting. But we just wanted to let you know, and when it is public comment time, we will be able to hear you. But there just is no video at your end seeing us. You will just be able to hear us and just have audio. But at this time, we will do our proclamation, and if members of the Adrian Morning Rotary Club would come forward. Oh, yeah, there you go. You should. All right. Whereas the Rotary Club of Adrian Morning was founded on September 1, 1999, and is comprised of professionals and community leaders. And whereas the mission of Rotary Club of Adrian Morning is to help our youth, community, and world build a better tomorrow. And whereas since 1999, the Rotary Club of Adrian Morning has provided grants, scholarships, and volunteers to make our community a better place. And whereas the Rotary Club of Adrian Morning has provided 27 little free libraries throughout the city and stocked the little free libraries with over 30,000 books. And whereas the Rotary Club of Adrian Morning has provided weekend snack sacks to thousands of children in the Adrian Public Schools and Madison Schools since 2011. And whereas the Rotary Club of Adrian Morning has undertaken community service projects to local organizations in the city. And whereas the Rotary Club of Adrian Morning celebrates its 25th anniversary this September, 2024. Now therefore I, Angela Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Rotary Club of Adrian Morning Month.
We appreciate, we appreciate the support and the recognition from the commission. Thank you. It's been a pleasure to provide some service. We really focus on youth and literacy and evident from the things you have in the proclamation. So thank you for your recognition and your support. We'll, we'll see if we make it another 25. Some of them will.
Thank you. Just if anybody wonders, those little free libraries are used a lot. I work directly in front of one, and it is a nonstop flow of people coming in to get books out of those little free libraries. So it is a great public service. At this time, we will have public comment regarding items on the agenda. We will start first inside the city chambers, and then we will open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin now. Hearing no public comment on items on the agenda inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Adam Mayor. I want to talk about the bicentennial.
State your name and place of residence. We couldn't hear that. Sorry.
Ken Tokar Xavier, Michigan. Can I talk about the bicentennial?
No, you can at the end. It's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no public comment, now we will move on to our work-study session, and I will hand it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first item for the work-study tonight is the continued discussion of our modifications to our vacant buildings ordinance. I made some revisions which did not show up as distinct from the other revisions, so I'll go over them with you. These were made based on your discussion at the last meeting. The first additional change is under Section 10403, so Subparagraph 2 there. We noted that an additional sort of property that would be exempt from this article are properties with a current point-of-sale inspection certificate of compliance, similar to the case for rental properties. And under Section 10404, we added a couple of things in Subparagraph 3. One, the requirement for email address for the contact person. And then, based on discussion about the meaning of care and control of the property, I added the explanation that this is a person who can provide access to the building on an emergency basis. Under Subparagraph 5, there was discussion about the need for proof of any utility disconnections. So we added a requirement for that information. And this is, this is information that's required with the registration form. And then we added an additional Subparagraph 6, that being a detailed plan of action for restoring the building to an occupied status. Again, this would be at the registration phase. The next additional modifications are in 10408. I added an additional Subparagraph 8, which is for properties located within the Downtown Development Authority's development area, that the windows of vacant street-level space shall be covered with an approved decorative treatment that mimics an active storefront. That's the way I described it. This is meant to be similar to the demonstration project that we had for the now no longer there buildings that were on the Town Square property. Going on to Section 10409, securing of structures. The fee, we talked about removing fees and referencing establishment of fees by resolution of the City Commission. That was the late fee there. Next additional change is, and the last additional change is in 10415, waiver of the registration fee. So again, in this case, we're saying that property that is under renovation can get a one-year waiver, but as part of that renovation process, you would also have to provide a detailed plan of action for accomplishing the intended activity within the one year that's available for the waiver. So those were the additional changes. We did put it in the pack at this time as well, so that was veiled for anybody who wanted to comment on it. We didn't hear any comments. But I'll open it up for the commission's discussion as to those revisions or anything else you noticed in your continued review.
Mr. Elliott, so Section 404, number 6. Section 6, might go back up to it. A detailed plan of action for restoring the building for an, to an occupied status. I just wondered if we wanted to put in there something about, or is in the process of having it demolished or demoed? Do we, what if they don't plan on have it, is it, is it not feasible to have it go back to an occupied status? Should we put something in there? Right now it just says plan to go back to an occupied status.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I guess, in a way, the one-year waiver provision would also probably address that, because if it's going to be demolished, one would hope it's going to be demolished within a year. But I suppose it wouldn't hurt also to provide that as an alternative to the plan of action.
I think I would like to add that word as well, Mary, because if it is, their plan is to demolish it, what's the plan after that? So I would like a little more detail as it goes to that, just to make sure that they're not, someone's not leaving it, you know, a mess after demolishing it too, so.
Okay, enough of that.
In 403. Sorry, have to go back to my notes here. I wrote home, and I wanted to change to property, but now I don't remember where that was exactly. Well-maintained occupied home. Yeah, that's what I wrote. Sorry, you're right. Thanks for looking at my notes. 408, Section 3. In a manner consistent with a well-maintained occupied home, should that be changed to property?
Yeah, I guess that applies more generally than just to homes. That's true.
Then there was just like a couple of typos that I'll get with you later.
The duration of the, the point-of-sale inspection, is that intended to be three years?
It's per that ordinance, but I believe it's, I believe that's what it says.
So you could have a vacant property for three years under this?
As long as your prop, in both cases, rentals and those inspected under the point-of-sale, as long as that certificate is current for however long that particular ordinance would prescribe, then you would not have, you would not be considered a vacant property.
Could you have the property inspected concurrently and extend six, nine, 12 years out?
I don't understand.
So your point-of-sale inspection expires after three years. Can I have a point-of-sale inspection take place on my vacant property so that I can extend it for three more years?
Well, I mean, a point-of-sale inspection certificate, and again, I'm going from memory because I don't have that ordinance in front of me, but it's good for as long as it's good for. And since you've had that inspection, you don't have to have this inspection or registration as well. So if that certificate expired, you could choose to, again, do that as opposed to do this. I guess I see your point, that you could elude this ordinance by repeatedly going through the point-of-sale inspection process.
Well, I think we need to leave out point-of-sale, because this inspection includes an indoor inspection. The point-of-sale does not include an indoor inspection.
Oh, that's, yes, that's true. Yeah, that's a good catch. We, I mean, we did talk about that previously, but we didn't make that distinction previously. You're right. So, yeah, it's probably best to just take that out.
And I think this was under the guise of the point-of-sale to address that if you had a house for sale, that it would, you would be operating under the point-of-sale, so you could avoid having it listed as a vacant home, go through the additional steps while you're selling it. So how do we address that piece to focus on people who are, you know, again, selling that estate house? And not that they don't come under the microscope, and those buildings that are empty for years do come under the microscope.
So there's the fee waiver, but it's not, it's not, as it reads currently, a waiver of the requirement to register. If you're actively selling the property, you get a one-year fee waiver, but you still have to register the property under the vacant buildings ordinance.
Still register it? Does it, is it inspected as part of the fee waiver?
Oh, that's clear.
Is there a way to have the point-of-sale for someone actively selling their home inspection? I don't, I'm not quite sure how to work through this. I didn't think it through, but I, I'm understanding what you're saying. You know, that's, that's just an exterior inspection, and if someone is actively selling in their home, do we need a vacant building inspection? I don't think we need that there. So how are we going to say that in this ordinance? That, you know, if someone is selling their home, the point-of-sale inspection is, is just, you know, that exterior inspection. We don't have to do a vacant building inspection unless, you know, most homes are selling fairly quickly. But how do we not overstep on that?
Well, remember, this wouldn't necessarily just apply to a home either, and so this, and it isn't clear in 10415 whether the inspection is waived or just the fee. You know, the implication would be, well, you're not paying for it, so you're not getting the inspection, but we should clarify it one way or the other. So I guess the appropriate topic for conversation would be, do you, you think that such a building should be inspected regardless of whether or not the fee is being paid, or, you know, is that fee waiver even appropriate? And, you know, that, that goes back to the original ordinance, but do you continue to believe that's appropriate, given that you could have a building which really does have some significant problems with, with it? And per the point-of-sale ordinance would at least be subject to an exterior inspection. You know, should there really be this one-year fee waiver in that case? Or should it just have to go through the, should the the opt-out be that you go through the point-of-sale inspection, and that gets you, you know, you're, you're good then until that point-of-sale inspection certificate is no longer good? I mean, that's not good, that, to your point, that doesn't do the interior piece, so that you don't want that to go on for too long. Are you good for one year?
Okay.
In that circumstance?
Is it point-of-sale when they sell the building?
Yes, but that's, that's one of the ways you can get out of having to pay the fee for the vacant building ordinances if you're actively selling the building.
So if they're at a point-of-sale or selling the building, then when they go to sell the building, then everything kicks in, correct?
Except that we have a lot of commercial buildings that are listed, but people aren't necessarily actively selling them, and that's
The target we want to
Right. Well, you think of Bixby.
So that's the target we're thinking at, like empty properties that have been there over and over, and just, they say they're for sale, but yet they're not moving or doing anything.
And there's, there's homes that are the same way, though. So I don't know if we can use it, so, you know, if there was someone actively living in the home, a point-of-sale inspection is sufficient. But if, you know, it was a vacant building already, I, I think that the point-of-sale inspection, they would have had a vacant building inspection already. Does that make sense? So it seems like we shouldn't have to worry about it being a vacant building, because if someone is selling a vacant building, they will have already had to have a vacant building inspection done. But if it's, someone was actively living there, a point-of-sale would be sufficient. Does that? Is that what, because this, you know, and sometimes
Well, you, you would think that would be special, but we talk every week at code enforcement meetings about cases where that is not sufficient at all, where, and people are living there actively, but yeah, we do need to think more about the interplay between those two. And, you know, to your point, the stronger of the two ordinances after a year, at least, is the vacant buildings. You know, the question, a question is, should there ever be this, you know, it's kind of contra to what you've adopted with point-of-sale to say, but you get a year with a vacant building where you don't have to have an you don't have to pay a, pay a fee, and you don't have, and you may not have to have it inspected. It's not clear whether an inspection is done during that first year.
Can we, because I, I think the intent here, at least in my mind, is that more to focus on homes instead of commercial property.
Not with this, not, I
No, 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 with, with the potential comments associated with the the point-of-sale components. So can we say something more along the lines that if a person's selling their home, that they have a point-of-sale inspection that may provide a waiver for this inspection up to one year? So that you don't have the continual renewal of every, you know, three years, like it was originally written, that it could be three years in length. So, all right, here, you have the home that's in, in estate. You put it up for sale. You have the point-of-sale inspection on the exterior of the building. It takes you three months to bring it up to where you need to for the point-of-sale. It takes another two months to sell it, and then it's off the books. However, if it takes a longer time and you go over the year, then at that point, it needs to be registered as a vacant property. Again, homes only, and that you would then need to have a vacant property inspection.
Yeah, I think the, the key there is that it was previously occupied
Right.
to that point where that happened.
Yeah, and I, I do agree with the, the component that if it was previously unoccupied, then maybe, then that wouldn't be
It should already be registered as a vacant building at that point.
Yeah, yeah, like, there's a lot of interplay there that we need to figure out, but I get the point. Yeah, we'll, we'll be bringing this back another time. Other issues people saw?
Oh, one more, I'm sorry. When you talked about oh, 408, the new number eight. Does brown paper count? You know, because I, I hear your decorative component, and I see some hastily hung brown paper, and I don't know if that's decorative or not.
Yeah, well, I know, and the idea is that it, as I said, mimics an active storefront. And that it's approved, an approved decorative treatment. What I would think is that the DDA would have examples of what, what's acceptable. The, you know, local printers have available. When we did it, we went to local printer, and, you know, they had stock photos that they showed us, and we said, all right, you know, the shoe store and the bakery, right? They were able to print those up on, you know, a static adhesive thing that just went on the window. So, you know, we might want to think a little bit more about what approved means, but that's the idea. Others? Okay, there, I'll let you handle the next item, if you don't mind.
So we had just been informed that now all of the host families are going to Lansing because they all want to go up there to pick up their, they're, they're the ones that are staying with them. So that's great, because that, we don't have to go split them, and you can all begin up there. So all of us can, we can put them in Lansing and bringing them down here. Seeing some Japanese and American flags, and I'm having a banner that we're going to have out there and just really making them feel welcome. When we, when our delegation went to Moriama, that's what they did for us. They, they had those flags, and they had that, that out there, and they, they made it a big celebration and just let them walk around for a little bit and enjoy First Friday before going to the Historic Crosswell stage with the host families. And I have received confirmation from all of you on, on who is coming and, and having that welcome dinner with the city commission and the city administrator and the city attorney and, and those host families. And then we're going to let them go to bed. We're not, we're not keeping them late. That's why we're doing 6:00 PM and letting them leave at 8:00 PM, because we know from going there, we were really tired. So we are going to let them depart pretty early to go for their host family's homes. And then on Saturday, September 7, we are going to be going to the Lenawee Historical Museum. They are opening 30 minutes early for us because of the time schedule we were under. But anybody is welcome to come in and join on that tour there. And then we will be departing for Sienna Heights University. Something just happened Thursday during the day for Sienna. They are working on a, they, they, the last I talked to them, they said they were getting it. They asked me to, they wanted the logo for Moriama, but they are actually making a commemorative coin for the coin toss, and they want them to go out there for the coin toss now and do that, and they made a coin for them. That was something that just came into the works Thursday afternoon. They contacted me and said, we had an idea. So they are working on that, but they're doing the coin toss, which I already knew. But they are going to be doing the coin toss for that game and having lunch provided there. And then as soon as halftime is over, we will be heading over to Adron College to their football game in, in their president's box. And, and then we are going to, as soon as that game is over, then we will be returning them for, to host families for the evening. Sunday, September 8 will be Host Family Day. This is something that is always done traditionally, whether we go there or they come here. The host family has a day with their delegate, and they get to take them around to wherever they want to take them and show them different things. In the past, some have gone up to like Greenfield Village, like they don't necessarily always stay right in Adrian or even Lenawee County, but they, this is their time to go show off an area of Michigan or something where they want to take them. And then Monday, this is where there's been some changes. Nate Parker and I just talked right before this. He's still trying to tag down an exact time, but it will be that morning for an Adron Public School, elementary school visit. But I don't have an exact time on that yet, because he was still trying to figure it out since school just started. But then we will be heading to Plainway for a tour out there. And then we will be having lunch that will now be provided by the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute. They're going to give us a tour. They actually have a North American group that is in from all over North America that is learning the furniture-making right now. And so they're going to get to witness a class that is happening, and they're going to provide lunch for them on that tour. And then we will be heading over to VOTAC to visit over there. And then we are going to be moving the City Hall tour over to Tuesday, because we have dinner at 5:00 o'clock, and they're going to be tired. We're going to run them all day that day. So we do want to give them a little bit of downtime. We will be doing our farewell dinner at 5:00 PM at Sauce in the back room. It's, obviously, they can't close their entire back room off, but they do have room dividers, so we will have a section. But that is why Hortmans did suggest that we do 5:00 PM to try to avoid the dinner crowd a little bit. Hortsman's did suggest that we do five P M. to try to avoid the dinner crowd a little bit more. And it's a little quieter during that time, but we will have dividers up and have our own space back there for the farewell dinner. And, um, we have some great gifts. Um, it's very exciting, some things that are, um, I haven't seen them, I just know about them, but, uh, so we are very excited. And, um, their gifts actually already did arrive. They're sitting in boxes. I have not opened them because I shouldn't, but they're sitting, um, in the mayor's office. So they already sent their gifts here as well. And then Tuesday, September tenth, um, because of doing the city hall tour, I'm going to up it to nine A M. The coffee and conversation with the mayor, we're going to do it right in the mayor's office and go right into a city, um, hall tour. And then go over to the Hickman Art Gallery at Adrian College and they are going to provide lunch for them. And, uh, meet the artist and have a, just be able to enjoy the art gallery. And then there has been a little bit of a change because now all the host families are taking them up. I don't have to worry about transportation and doing all of this. So, uh, I, um, it's something we wanted to do, but we couldn't fit it in. This was the problem. It didn't have time and now we have time. So we are going to take them to Hidden Lake Gardens on the way to Lansing and do the canopy tour, the canopy walk if they're able to. But just enjoy, uh, the, the, the gardens and that is something we know they'll really enjoy. And we really wanted to make it work, but it just wasn't fitting into the schedule. But now it did because they backed everything up in Lansing on Tuesday to evening as opposed to mid afternoon. So we're going to take them there and then their host families are going to be attending that farewell dinner up in Lansing. So that's why they're taking them up there. So.
The, uh, the time on Monday for the VOTAC tour?
Yeah, I think he said two o'clock. I can't remember. Because he was messing around with what time it's just they gave me a timeframe. But I told them I could be ready, we could be ready at two because that won't be an issue at all. Cause I already talked to Luke at Sam Buford Woodworking.
Okay, just so, because the concern there would be that, um, students begin leaving around two.
I don't know, that was the time they gave me, but I will, I'll reconfirm that and let you know. Because there was only certain times and we knew morning couldn't work because it couldn't make it work. And they, because originally they wanted it kind of near a lunchtime, but it just wasn't going to work.
And I'm not sure if your intent is to have delegation, student interaction, or just to see the.
No, we wanted student interaction, so. I will make sure on that time. But there would be plenty of time because I knew that the, um, it would be about one thirty when we'd probably be getting over there if, if we need to. We need to move it up. We're right there. It works out perfect. Everything's right there in that little group.
Run them across the street.
Yes, that was the try, that was what we were trying to make work, but it was a little bit like Tetris, but we got it there.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Does anyone else have anything that you want to discuss during work session? A reminder, we do have the translation services survey out. Available on our website, on Facebook. Michelle, anything else I need to say about that?
There's also printed copies available by the door and there will be printed copies at City Hall and the Adrian District Library as well.
Our intent is to keep that open through the next city commission meeting and then close it. Is that right? Yep. Okay, Meryl, turn it over to you for the regular agenda.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion approved.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion approved.
At this time, we will move on to the regular agenda and we are having a public hearing. It is special order dash one, a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding a Michigan neighborhood grant. At this time, we will begin the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward with comments on this may do so on the podium or on Zoom. Hearing no comment. I call the public hearing closed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R twenty-four dash zero forty is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve an agreement with the Smith Group and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Sorry, so moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Has there been any changes since the public, uh, forum that was held here in chambers? Several months back where the Smith Group came in and had a, had the input session?
There, there have been a few changes that, to the design that were requested by M dot. I would call them technical changes, but project basically remains the same.
And when we heard from the various bike, bicycle groups, any of that had, have an impact, uh, with the design phase? Or is that still a possibility for, um, those components or is that locked in?
Uh, it's locked in in terms of it being a, a two-way route. There were turn boxes added as part of the M dot review process to the, to the, uh, sort of the marking plan for the, for the bicycle way.
So turn boxes were, that's a bicycle added?
I, I think it's a, I think it's just paint.
Okay.
But it's pavement markings, but that was an issue that came up during the M dot review.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero forty-one is from Utilities. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and approve the purchase of a generator for the O and M facility. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Just a, a question as to why we want to waive the, the bid process for this component?
So the, the waiver is as to the requirement for sealed bids and a particular reason and Will is online and he can explain it better if you need more explanation, but in essence, he wanted bidders to visit the facility and just spec out what they thought was appropriate in terms of a generator for the facility as opposed to sending out a spec list that, uh, would result in them sending back in sealed bids. And so the process didn't include a component for sealed bids as such. But we did get free competitive quotes.
And it, and it was open to anyone, right? Not just these three individuals, companies.
Will, can you explain how people were notified of the opportunity?
Yeah, no, it was, we just invited three companies that, that were fairly local or ones that we have worked with in the past. Including A E G, which is actually our contracted electrical, uh, electrical contractor. I don't know if you caught that or not?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or questions for Will while he's unmuted?
Well, I, why didn't we publish a bid? I mean, was, there was no sense of urgency, was there? I mean, why didn't we send out the, a bid package? I mean, I understand about wanting them to come and look, but opening it up just to three?
Will, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I guess pretty much for the most part, it was a situation where I'm not an expert on generators. I just felt it was if we had, uh, people come out and look at it, give us a quote, which is what we did. People that know what they're doing. Had I actually posted specific bed, uh, bid specifications, then other people could have been shut out of that bid because we would have specified a certain generator. Um, and this way they, you know, they were able to come and look at it. As far as the number we looked at, again, it was just ones that were local and ones that we'd worked with in the past.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this time, we will begin general public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. There will be a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. When we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants.
Judith Hammerly, Glendale Avenue in Adria. I was looking at that sign as I walked in about the accessibility and the entrance in the back. Some of you may remember I was using a wheelchair for a while to come in. My access accessibility was Commissioner Roberts realizing I was there and then opening the door for me. And having some of our usual attendees push my wheelchair because the ramp was very steep. I'm not sure that's really accessible legally. So that's something I know it would be an expense, but there's no way to get in unless somebody knows that you're there and opens the door for you. Thank you.
Don Taylor, I'm a resident of Adrian. I put a little save the date card on your, uh, counter there for the seventeenth annual Art Delicious Fine Arts Fair coming up two, uh, two weeks from this coming weekend. We have sixty-six artists, although we may, uh, we have a few that were on the waitlist, we're calling them to see if they'd like to join us. Eight food carts, that's, that's the most important thing, really. Well, anyway. Twenty nonprofit organizations and we are actually jam-packed, um, on, uh, West Malmese Street along with My Adventure Theater, which will be there on Saturday. And Sun, Sunday, something new, the Adrian Public Schools Theater Department will be having interactive theater performances for kids right in the same spot, uh, on, uh, West Malmese Street. Saturday night. We don't go home, we stay here and we, we have a good time, drink a little beer and, uh, we got two great bands. Flowers on the Grave performing from six thirty to eight thirty and Billy Lewis and the Soulbacks from eight thirty to ten thirty, although they said he may play till eleven. So we'll, police chief is here, we'll see what he says about that. Couple of new things this year, we, we had a new program called Budding Artists and we asked, uh, art teachers to recommend a student in their program that might, might well be acceptable to be in the, actually be in the fair in a tent with a mentor. So we have two students, one from Adrian High School, one from Clinton High School, along with a, um, mentor from A C A. And, um, they do some pretty cool work, they really do. So we're excited about that. The other thing, Lenneway County K twelve digital art exhibition, we started that two years ago. Well, this is the third year. Annie Howard from Adrian Public School started it and is a treasure for sure. We had a hundred and twenty-five kids submit artwork and it was shown here on the four screens, uh, all during the weekend. Last year we had a hundred and seventy-four, I think it was. So we're looking for a little bit of improvement this year. We had three school districts the first two years. Four hundred and sixty-four submissions this year. Six school districts. And I was at Marinsy yesterday for the bridge, bridge, bridge walk with my one minute speech. And I was able to thank them for having their elementary school students involved. So, uh, we're looking for another great year. The weather's going to be perfect, by the way, I, I just checked with the weather channel. I want to switch, I want to switch gears real quick. Some of you know, I'm involved with Lenneway Lifelong Learning and along with our classes, sometimes we've been doing, downtown tours of historic buildings. And I suggested, my idea, um, why don't we do a municipal tour? Why don't we visit the police station, the fire station, water and wastewater treatment plants? Cause I know these guys are all, they're all geared up because of Mary's program, you know? So we're going to be doing that in October, four Fridays. And I have to tell you, you all need to know this. All three of those people responded to me immediately. So we'd love to do it. Uh-oh, is that my three minutes? Yeah, okay. Anyway, I want you to know that, uh, I appreciate that very much. Looking forward to having them do it, so.
At this time, we will open it up to the Zoom participants.
Uh, Kent O'Carthers, Adrian, Michigan, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Many of you know me as someone who does not want the city of Adrian to spend money. Many, if not most of those opinions are based upon a broken city of Adrian system that is used to make those decisions. For a school bond to pass, the school district has to work. They work to get support from a variety of groups and the decision is finally made at the ballot box. In contrast, Adrian Development makes a phone call and the city of Adrian makes a multimillion dollar decision with limited on public input and no ballot box confirmation. Several weeks ago, Mr. Elliott updated the Adrian City Commission on the Fee Estate and commented that the house was not worth saving. I have lived in Adrian for eighteen years. It did not realize that the White House across from the Fee Park was the Harriet Kimball Fee's house. What was more disturbing was that the commissioners more or less accepted Mr. Elliott's recommendation without question and would ultimately approve the demolition of the Fee House without fully understanding what we have done. I am not a fan of one-sided surveys and believe it to be incumbent upon the Adrian City Commission to publish a neutral city commissioner-approved survey asking the public if they want to save the Fee House and what to eventually do with it. Would taxpayers approve a half million dollars or a million dollar millage or special assessment district to save the Harriet Kimball Fee House? Do taxpayers want one million dollars from our general fund set aside to update the Harriet Kimball Fee House? Do taxpayers want to see the Fee House updated and converted into a permanent residence that will be used to market and entice a competent city administrator to come to Adrian? Housing may be the edge that gets us a good one. Harriet Kimball Fee has done a lot for the city of Adrian and continues to do a lot for the city of Adrian. Now it's the city's turn to come together and do something for Harriet Kimball Fee as a possible bicentennial project. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, Aiden Stonesaver, uh, Michigan. I was wondering how many citizens are attending this meeting?
We need you to state your place of residence within Michigan, please.
Oh, uh, Blissfield, not Blissfield, uh, Fairfield, my, my bad.
All right, thank you. We, we don't comment back to public comment, so.
Uh, okay.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comment?
Madam Mayor? I have a question, I have a question for Mr. Elliott. I have no recollection of any recommendation or decision by this body to demo, to provide demolition for the Harriet Fee Home.
No. The, the fact is that, uh, A, we, we don't yet own it. It's in the estate, which is being administered by Attorney Clark Baldwin. A, we, we don't yet own it. It's in the estate, which is being administered by Attorney Clark Baldwin. Um, he's in the process currently, uh, with our input of repairing, getting quotes to repair the roof because the roof needs to be stabilized so that, uh, it will have an opportunity to, um, have some longevity, but, uh, our intent, what we've, what, what I have told him is that, uh, we don't want the estate to sell the house. We want the estate to give us a deed to the house and that then we will go through a process that your direction, your, the city commission's direction to, uh, take proposals for the restoration of the house is what we would expect will happen.
Thank you for that explanation, uh, both to the commission and to the public at large.
Tomorrow night, the Adrian Community Academy begins, uh, here at 6:30. We have 22 participants. I have been emailing with them and they all seem very excited. Um, and we really, uh, appreciate the support from the city and county staff. Um, so look forward to another great academy.
Do, do we have a plan to, um, address the, the back door? So if I, I think of an open public meeting as a location that you can open the door and come into and not have to bang on the door or hope that Mary's around to let you in for the meetings.
And we, the back door is unlocked.
It is. Okay. Thank you.
Or it should be. Um, that's our program is to unlock the back door during the meeting and lock it at the end. Uh, so you can get in, um, on your own if, but we will value, I'll have Tony look at the, the ramp and such and make sure it's compliant.
Okay. And any movement on a sign up front?
Well, we have the temporary side of the door tonight, but, uh, yeah, we're going to have a more permanent, uh, notice of how to, how to get around to the barrier for entrance.
Thank you. And then just one last thing. I know the, the point of sale implementation, um, was six months from when it was, um, when it was passed. And the hope there was that there was going to be the procedures of the process, um, brought forth to, um, the commission to work out all those things that needed to be worked out that weren't part of the ordinance itself. And then there was going to be, uh, lack of better term, a communications campaign so that people selling their house would know what the process and those steps are. Where, where do we fall in, um, that process for when we see things and I think setting fees was one of those things. And obviously information going out to the public.
Yeah, we're working on organizing a sort of a focus group of Realtor title company, it's banker, et cetera, to give us some uh, feedback on that. That's going to be our first step. Obviously the fee resolution will have to come to you before the uh, effective date of the ordinance, which I think is toward the end of December, as I recall correctly. So that's what's happening right now. Thank you.
Just a reminder to everyone, if you can be out there at 5:00 PM to welcome our delegates, um, from Moriyama, Japan, including Mayor Morinaka. We would greatly appreciate it at the Four Corners this Friday.
I have 200 Japanese flags and 200 American.
So come on out. We have lots.
Yeah.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.